Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the City of Independence, I welcome each of you in attendance, as well as those of you who may be watching at home on City 7, to the January 28th meeting of the Independence Planning Commission. To start off our meeting tonight, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you tonight who are unfamiliar with our meetings, it is this commission's responsibility to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the Independent City Council on matters relating to zoning and land use changes within our city. We also consider and make decisions on plaits, special use permits, and other issues, as well as changes in codes and policies that relate to city planning. Our procedure for each case tonight is as follows. First, as we take each case, the applicant of that case will be recognized to speak on behalf of their case. Then, anyone else who would like to speak in favor of that case will be allowed to speak. Second, those who are in opposition or who have questions regarding that case will then be recognized to speak. After that, there will be a rebuttal period so that the person can explain his position or answer questions. Once the applicant is finished, the Chair will declare the public hearing portion of the case closed, and further comment from the public will not be recognized. At that point, the commissioners will have the opportunity to discuss the merits of the case with one another, and during this discussion, the commission reserves the right to ask questions of all parties concerned. And then finally, the commission will render a decision on the case. Tonight, because this is the only public hearing on the cases that are on this agenda tonight, all those who wish to speak will be heard. All comments and questions should be addressed to the Chair and not directly to the applicant or to the city staff. The Chair also requests that statements be kept brief and on point, and that if a statement has already been made by a previous speaker, please do not repeat it or ramble, but focus and simply indicate what you want to say or your agreement on the matter. So now, to expedite tonight's meeting, the Chair asks that everyone who's here tonight that wishes to testify or thinks that they may testify, that doesn't mean you have to, but if you think you might do it, or you know you're going to do it, it's a time now to stand and be sworn in. So, if anybody's going to speak, one person. The other, Stuart, do you see the other applicants?
Well, through the outfit...
Well, you need to be sworn in.
Cretfield, you need to stand and talk.
Yeah, anybody who's going to go up to this microphone and speak, or even if you ask questions or want to make just a brief comment, you need to be sworn in. And just because you're standing and need to be sworn in, doesn't mean you have to, okay? All right. Those standing, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, please answer, "I do." Thank you very much. You may be seated. The first item on our agenda tonight is it... Case, case number 19-32006, final plat. Is that a consent or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this or a motion to consider this? To vote on this?
Just approve it. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In the matter of case number 19-320-06, final plat approval, I move for final approval of that.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
My second.
We're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Drieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Case number 19-320-06, final plat, has been approved. Our next case is case 20-100-02, rezoning of 11610 East Truman Road. Will the city give us the report?
Yes, this is...
This is a request by the Ararat Shrine Association to rezone this property on the northwest corner of North Forest Avenue and Truman Road from R12, which is two-family dwelling, and I1, which is industrial, to C1, neighborhood commercial. From the vicinity map, you can see the oval sits on the northwest corner of that intersection. This is the zoning for the site, for the area, with the property in the oval. As you can see, the area is a mixture of zoning districts. The southern part of the site is being, is currently I1, which is that slightly bluish-purple color, with the northern part being R12. The larger multifamily zoning to the east is the Grove Senior Living Complex, and to the south is the former medical complex with the office buildings and parking garage. This is a comprehensive plan for the site. It shows civil and public uses for the site, along with the utility services lot to the north and the former medical complex to the south being the same. The surrounding property designation is for neighborhood residential. The aerial photograph shows the site, shows the property with the site being in the oval. The former utility services building is on the south end of the site with a customer parking on the north end of the lot. To the east is a vacant lot and the Grove's residential living facility. On the south side of Truman Road is the former Truman Medical Complex, much of which is owned by the Independent School District. The applicant has provided a couple of illustrations. It shows how they would make modifications to the outside of the building. She recognizes the blue tile building that's been on that intersection for decades. It appears they're going to maintain the blue tile that's unique to this building and just add some modifications to the site. There's a doorway with the drive-through lane, obviously. This is another one taking, taken of the north elevation. Again, it shows the drive-through lane taken up, covered, but most of the building remains the same on the outside. This is the pictures of the site. This is, we're standing on the corner, taking a shot of the northeast, excuse me, the southeast corner of the building with, you can see the Truman Road elevation on the left and the south, excuse me, North Forest elevation on the right. There's the drive-through window. And the sign is actually right here in front of us, where the letters were for the service center. This is the east elevation. We're standing on the west, excuse me, the east side of North Forest, looking directly at the building. Here, we're on Truman Road, looking to the north-northeast at the east side, excuse me, the west side of the building, along with the customer parking area, which is on the left side of the building. And this is looking to the west. This is some of the, a small area of the parking on the north side of the building. And then, this is the larger customer parking area north of the building. Off in the distance there, it's not very visible, but it's the services yard for the water department and some IPL stuff, I think, is in that yard also. The city continues on that lot. This is on the northeast corner of that intersection. It's a vacant lot. There was a building there about 10 years ago that was demolished. Off in the distance is the Grove's. This is the southeast corner of the property. That's the medical office building that was next to the hospital. And this is the parking garage that served the medical complex. It's on the southwest corner of that intersection. And this is a property that is to the west of the property, of the site. It's 100 yards or so from the, from the Shriner's building. His staff recommends approval of this application.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions of city staff before we bring the applicant out? Okay. Would you please come forward, sir, and state your name and address for the record, if you would, and just add anything you'd wish to tell us?
Larry Adolphson, 1307 Southwest Georgetown, Lee Summit. I'd like to thank the chairman and the commissioners for allowing me to talk.
Could you speak into the microphone a little bit more, sir?
Just let me know if I back off too much. The building has been vacant since November 2016. By allowing this rezoning, it will allow us to use the building and get occupants into the building. We want the building, there's been some interest in leasing it, along with our Masonic Lodges, our fraternity brothers, if you will, to hold meetings there and take use of the building. In the spring, we plan on doing some landscaping and some cosmetic improvements. And by allowing the rezoning, this building will no longer be vacant, and it'll help tantalize the neighborhood. Questions?
Are there any questions? Come on. Yes, sir?
Oh, sure. Do you plan on closing the other shrine building eventually, moving here?
Not at this time. It is not closed.
Not in the near future?
It has not been sold.
But in the near future, do you plan on this being the main building?
I can't answer that. I don't, in, there's no one looking at it right now. So, near future is, I don't know. Does that answer your question? Best of my ability, anyway, I hope.
But you're, but that would be the dream? Would be to sell the older building and have this be the permanent one?
That, that's part of it.
Okay.
We got a lot of things. We're juggling over there and had some stuff fall through and you just roll with the punches and go on.
Sure.
I imagine everyone here knows what that's like.
Yeah, unfortunately, yes, I do.
I note in the background data that although this is a substantial facility and certainly would accommodate facilities to rent out banquets, that you have no plans to install kitchen facilities, at least not at this time.
No, we don't. We have, I imagine there'll be, at the meetings, they have food afterwards, but not like a banquet, full-scale, something like that, no.
All right, are there any more questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone else who is here that has questions or who is opposed? Okay. I'll declare the public portion closed on this case and would ask if the commissioners have any comments or motions?
Straightforward, Chairman. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
This is a rather straightforward matter. I move that in the matter of case number 20-100-02, to rezone 2.94 plus and minus acres from R12, two-family residential, and I1 industrial to C1 neighborhood commercial be approved.
My second.
Unless there's any discussion, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Drieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Case number 19-320-0, I'm sorry, wrong one, cash, case number... Oh, that's right. That's why I don't have it. Case number 20-100-02. The rezoning of 11610 East Truman Road has been approved. Good luck to you, sir. Thank you. All right, now, our next case is case number 19-400-04, short-term rental. Would the city give this report, please?
Yes, so Brian Cretfield for Better Places LLC seeks to operate a short-term rental business at this property at 9630 East Linwood Boulevard. The oval shows the location on the northwest corner of Linwood and south Overton Avenue. The city limits are to the west and south. This is the zoning for the property in Oval. The site, along with other, all other properties in the immediate area, are zoned R6, single-family residential. The aerial shows the site with the property in the Oval. The applicant is unique in, this application is unique in that it will have two separate rental units on the site, the main house and a guest house. In the Oval, the house, the main house is on the south, which is on the bottom part of the property, and the guest house is on the north of the site. Single-family homes surround the property. This is, the applicant provided this aerial photograph showing the house, the parking area, and the additional parking on the side of the house, along with the guest house, which is in the little green box, I believe. Here, we're on Linwood, looking north into the site at the front of the house. Here, we're on Linwood, excuse me, we're on Overton, looking at the west at the side of the house, which also faces south here. You can see on the, the Overton is on the, on the right, and then the Linwood is on the left. Here, we're on Overton, looking west at the driveway and the guest house, which is the second dwelling. For more, from the information available, this is not conforming situation with the two dwelling units on the lot has been in place for many years. Here, we're looking to the northwest at the house, directly north of the site. This is the house on the east side of Overton, which is northeast of the site. This is the house on the northeast corner of the, of this intersection, directly east of the applicant's property. This building, this house is on the northeast corner of the intersection, cat-a-corner to the applicant's property. Here, we're looking south, directly at the house on the southwest corner of the intersection. Again, directly across from the applicant's property. This is another house on the south side of Linwood, southwest of the applicant's property. And then, this house is directly west of the site. Our staff recommends approval of this application, subject to the following conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with City Code and comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the City Code. The occupational license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. The business must comply with all standards established by Section 14, 420 of the City Code. And then, the applicant must provide a total of four paved parking spaces for guest parking. I would like to add that we should put a deadline on that for it to be done, no later than, like, the 1st of May. Give the applicant a couple times, a couple months to have good weather to add those spaces.
Okay, so, and we're not asking for, we're not asking for four additional. We're just asking that, because he's got six, right? So, just want to pave two of those.
Yeah, just two additional spaces.
Gotcha, okay.
Right now, they've got two spaces on the street along the two, East Linwood and, and Overton, but they're in, they're basically parking on the grass. So, we want to make those spaces legitimate, so to speak.
Sure, all right. Does anyone have questions of city staff before we bring the applicant forward? Okay, would the applicant please come forward? State your name and address for the record.
Hi, Brian Cretfield, 15408 East 44th Terrace, Independence, Missouri, 64055.
I know you've been here before, but it's been a little while. So, if you can just give us a little more information, if you feel like you need to.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me back. It's good to be back. Just to, you know, reiterate what I said last time I was here.
Make sure you, you gotta, you've almost gotta be really close.
Yeah, you know, like I said in my explanation for it, basically, you know, we lived in the house. We were, there's a lot of room in there, actually. There's a lot more room than it looks like from the pictures. And there's a couple different finished spaces in there. So, we had my mom living there at one point. She was living with us, and we were using it in that regard. And then, we used the guest house, which is fully finished. We were renting it out long-term. Had a couple bad experiences with some longer-term rentals. We tried a few different things, and then, we had a friend tell us about the short-term rental thing that he was doing, working out really well for him. So, we tried that, just because we were losing a bunch of money the way we were doing it. So, since then, we have been operating short-term rental, mainly through Airbnb. And it's basically given us the opportunity, the biggest thing is it's allowed us to renovate the house. Pretty much, all the money that has been made through using short-term rental, we put back into the house. The inside, it's pretty old. I think the house is built in 1947. So, it's got a lot of old stuff in there. So, we renovated a lot of that, torn a lot of the old stuff out and some electrical work and stuff, and then the outside as well. So, we've done a lot of landscaping and exterior work. We actually paved that driveway recently. So, and I guess, not to drum on too long, but it's actually given us the opportunity to, for me to, we took the money and put it into the house, and then, we've also taken some of that money and started my own LLC and kind of was able to push me in some other directions. So, actually, now, my business, we do home rehabs. So, we do a lot of flipping houses in the area. It's not really flipping houses. It's more like fixing up old junky houses for rental in the area, mainly Independence and Eastern Kansas City. So, it's growing. We're a very small business. But just as of January, I was able to become self-employed. So, this was kind of the jumping point for that, so it's been a tremendous opportunity. It's given my mother employment. She's disabled. She can't do a whole lot, but she's able to clean the places between tenants. So, that actually keeps her employed. And then, also, just other people that come and do the maintenance and everything. We keep it very well-maintained. We're at the mercy of a five-star rating. So, we keep the house pristine condition and clean and everything operating. So, that's about it.
Okay. Does anyone have questions of Brian? Okay?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Do you rent just exclusively on, online?
Yeah, yeah, we use platforms and the mainly, we use mainly Airbnb, VRBO. And the reason we do that is because they have insurance. They have all the, the structure, background check, all that stuff. So, basically, when the person gets to us, we already have them screened. We already have full-coverage insurance in case something were to happen. So, yeah, we keep it.
And your minimum rental is one day?
Uh, I think we haven't set it two days right now.
Two days? We've got one more question. Have you looked into what would happen if somebody chose not to leave?
Uh, yeah.
What if it would be criminal or civil?
Um, no, it's a criminal thing. It's, well, basically, it goes to the police. They are unlawful tenant. So, I mean, you'd have to go through that. But they, basically, it's called trespassing if they stay any longer than they're supposed to, which we would reach out to the platform that they booked through, and they have a whole procedure that they go through, but we've never run into that thus far.
Well, you know, with the long-term rental, it's civil.
Right.
You know, you can't get them out.
Mm-hmm.
So, you think this is...
I had to go through that, too.
Correct, right. So, you think this is different?
As far as I know, it is. As far as I know. Like I said, I haven't had to deal with it yet.
Yeah.
But I've had, like, guests sleep in, like, you know, they've slept in a little too late. So, I had to call the platform and say, "Hey, they're, you know, they're here a little late." And they basically say, "Well, in the case that they did stay too long, you would just call the police and they're trespassing." That's basically how it goes. Because there's no, there's no lease, per se. It's just a single-night use.
So, you're already in business? You're already doing this?
Yes, sir.
I see, okay.
I think you answered my question.
Great.
So, well, thank you very much. We may ask you to come back up, but that's all for now.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this case? All right, is there anyone here who is opposed or who has questions? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, public portion of this hearing, and ask the commissioners for any comments, questions, or motions.
I was just a little confused on the parking. Like, he already says he's got the six spaces, but we're requiring him to have four. And then, you said something about you just wanted it to be more intentional. Is that correct?
If you look at the aerial photograph here, the two spaces that he has along Overton and also the two that he has on Linwood, shown in the little sort of white boxes there, those are just parking on the grass, essentially.
Okay.
We want genuine paved spaces for those, for those additional, and not just parking in a low spot on the grass along the curb.
Is there a time, is there a timeframe that he has to have those done?
Well, I suggested that we give him until May 1st. Yeah, the pictures that we took in the, when he came through the first time, showed that much better. The winter pictures in the snow here, they don't really show what that looks like. You can't see the parking in the grass. You know, you can see it's, it's pulled off and the grass is partly dead there. So, we're trying to get away from that. And if he's running a commercial business here, he should improve the property. I think you could take that off your taxes for that matter, business expense.
I'm sure I'll have to ask you this again as we go along into the future, but how many, is there a requirement for how many parking spaces that he needed? And is it, is it varying with the size of the house or just, or the units?
Well, I think that there's only really two units here, and I think a hotel is, what does it say here that they're required to have? Yeah, it just says, she'll be in, in conformance with the parking standards, which I believe is one unit per, one space per unit. But here, when you have three bedrooms in one house, or in one bed, in one, and then, two bedrooms in another, I, just two spaces, he's just not going to make it. It's just not going to work.
I agree. So, does that mean we don't really have that in the, is, is, is a certain, like, standard that we are trying to apply? Or we just take them as, as they come?
Well, I think there's a little bit of both. I mean, we have one that'll be coming through in a few weeks. It basically has no off-street parking, no paved off-street parking. The gravel that was there was kind of dissolved, and so there, but nobody goes there most of the time. So, we're just going to, we're requiring two be provided. But it's a small house with only, very small house, actually, with two spaces. So, it's reasonable to assume that they wouldn't have more than two people there at once, and maybe just one car.
So, as a side note, couldn't it be, this is just random, but couldn't it be that it's a parking space per bedroom? Isn't that kind of how?
Which is kind of what we're going to, we're going with this recommendation.
Yeah.
So, the answer to my question was, we just take it as, on a case-by-case basis?
Uh, yeah, with, with the general idea there being basically.
And I'm fine with that, I just didn't know if we had a minimum requirement or just what we were doing, so.
Well, this is a, situation's kinda unique that it has two separate dwelling units.
Okay. Alright, are there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I certainly applaud this applicant for coming forward, and I know there are a substantial number of other existing short-term operations that are not licensed. And I'm fully confident in the competence of staff and the fire department to review the application. However, as we note, that we took a pause in reviewing applications and giving time for the council to put together regulations and working with staff. I, I think we would be remiss if we did not give due notice to this particular applicant and all subsequent applicants that our regulations or our ordinances are a work in progress. And that the license is for one year. And as these regulations evolve, standards may change. And you would be required to conform with the existing, uh, uh, regulations in place upon renewal.
Point well taken.
Thank you.
Yeah, point well taken, Billy. And one thing that I did wanna ask you, that I forgot to ask you, is, um, you're, you're in agreement with all the recommendations that the city's requiring you to do, right? The paving, the parking lot and all that, and the license, okay. Just have to ask. Okay, are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Sure, Joe.
Does this, does this seem to be excessive to have, where you could have almost?
Where you could have almost twenty people in, in such a small area? I mean, they, he's, he's put on here that he could, he could have up to ten people, I believe, in each building.
That, ten for both, okay.
Ten for both? Well, that's better.
Well, yeah. I mean, sometimes ten people can be just as loud or louder than twenty people depending on their mood, but I'm sure that, uh, there's, I would think, are there, are, do you know some of the neighbors in there and, maybe you should come up to the microphone? I'm sorry. Just one thing that a lot of folks are concerned about sometimes is, you know, there's people coming in that they don't know, and they're there for a short time, so, are there any neighbors that you know, or people that wouldn't be shy about, hey, calling you up and saying, hey, you know, these people are getting kinda rowdy, or there's this, this is going on? That would, uh, communicate with you about that, so that, I mean, I suppose they could call the police, but, uh, but would they notify you?
Yeah, I've actually had neighbors call me, um, actually, it was, it's usually things that are unrelated, but just cause they know that I operate a business, they've called me saying, hey, there's, there's a guy kinda creeping around the property over there looking at your fire pit. Looks like maybe they, they might wanna take that thing, or, um, so, yeah, I have gotten calls. You know, like I said, knock on wood, we've never had any bad experiences to where we've, you know, had neighbors call and say, oh, there's something on fire, you know? Whatever, whatever it may be, so, um, but, yeah, we do have neighbors that we do talk to that have our phone numbers, um, that we have good relationships with.
Okay, great, great. Thank you for sharing that.
I did wanna say one thing that.
Sure.
The spaces on the side of the road, they are actually, um, old spaces, they put, uh, railroad ties and gravel. So, I mean, they could definitely be improved, and I don't mind putting pavement on them, but I just wanna say it's not just pulling there in the grass with ruts and everything, there is actually gravel and railroad ties there, so.
Okay, alright, thanks for sharing that. Okay, any comments?
I was just gonna say, I feel comfortable knowing that you're on the VRBO or the Airbnb, because they are so strict. And you, you do have to be so compliant in order to be, I mean, you know, like I said, if you get three stars, you just might as well do something different. But, so, it's a comfortable platform to be on, I think, both for the city, from a city standpoint, and just personal, so, I applaud you for doing that, cause that's a big, it's a big task. There's a lot of criteria you have to meet, so it's good.
Okay. Anything further? Motion, perhaps?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve case number nineteen dash four hundred dash thirteen, short-term rental. Arlington Street Better Places LLC, with the recommendations from the city and a deadline of May one.
Boy, you're on it.
Am I on the wrong one?
Yes.
Good God. Sorry. I didn't get my packet. Okay. Start over. Case number nineteen dash four hundred dash zero four, short-term rental for Linwood Street Better Places LLC, right? Cool. With the city's recommendations and the added deadline of May one.
Awesome.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded. Unless there's any comments or additional questions, we're ready to take the vote.
Commissioner Drieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number one nine dash four hundred dash zero four, short-term rental for nine six three oh, East Linwood Boulevard has been approved. Congratulations to you folks and good luck. Our next case, someone's already told us what it is, so there's no surprise here, but it's, um,
It's already been approved.
Case number one nine dash four hundred dash one three, short-term rental for three four two eight South Arlington Avenue. Could you provide the report for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Kritchfield is also the applicant for this location. He ceased operating a short-term lo- short-term rental business at thirty-four twenty-eight South Arlington. The oval shows the location of the site on the west side of Arlington Avenue, just north Thirty-Fifth Street. This is the zoning for the area with the property in the oval. The site, along with other properties in the immediate area, is owned R six, a single-family residential. As you get closer to, uh, Thirty-Fifth Street on the south side of Thirty-Fifth and also Forty Highway further south, it, it has more commercial areas. The aerial photograph shows the site in the oval. Thirty-Fifth Street is to the south, as you can see there. Single-family homes surround the, the property. Again, the applicant provided this, uh, aerial photograph showing the house, the garage, which is in the green tr- rectangle, and the parking, in the driveway, and then another parking area in front of the str- in front of this, along the street. Here, we're on Arlington, looking west into the property of the front of the house. A yellow-colored wood frame house. This is another si- uh, photo of the front of the house, um, that shows the parking with this applicant, there's actually six parking places. Got one in the garage that the, the tenants could use, two in front of the garage, and then also three along the side of the garage. This is the property to the north of this site. Uh, directly north, we're looking to the northwest. Here, we're looking to the east and, uh, northeast on the houses on the east side of Arlington across some of the property, this one and this one. This photograph, we're looking south down Arlington toward Thirty-Fi- Fifth Street, which is just off to the left. And this is the house directly south of the subject property. Staff recommends approval of this application subject to the following conditions. Short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Chapter five, Article three of the city code. The occupational license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. The business must conform to all sta- all standards established by Section fourteen, four twenty of the city code.
Thank you, Stuart. Before we bring Brian back up again, is there any questions of city staff? Okay. Come up and just go ahead and give us your name and address for the record again, please.
Brian Kritchfield, one five four zero eight, East forty-fourth Terrace South, Independence, Missouri, six four zero five five.
Thanks. Is there anything, uh, like, different that you could tell us about this one?
Uh, there is. It's basically an extension of kinda what we were already doing. It's two minutes' drive from my other place. The difference with this one is we, uh, so, through doing the first one, what we really noticed, um, is there are high demand for what you might call longer short-term rental, which would be still under thirty days. But it, really what we target is, uh, traveling nurses, which is actually a really big, uh, portion of people, more than you would think. Traveling nurses, um, uh, people traveling for work, uh, business stuff, um, so, and actually, we've had a good percentage of the people are, uh, you wouldn't think there'd be a lot of this, but, you know, people get their homework done and they gotta move somewhere. Well, you don't wanna go move into a hotel for, say, half a month or three weeks. So, we've actually had quite a few people for that, and we noticed that demand, so that's kinda was our intention with this one. So, this is, there's no two-day minimum here. This is, I think we got it set to a week minimum, so, um, the people you attract are ones that need to come into town for, it's mainly people coming into town for business, that's who, that's basically been ninety percent. And the rest has been people getting their homes worked on or something, so, um, and that's pretty much all I got to say about that one. It's pretty much the same thing. It's through Airbnb, VRBO, and, uh, yeah, just a little extension of what we were already doing, just kind of a little bit different setup.
Okay. Are there any questions about this property for Brian?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Is that a, how long you been doing this? Renting this one out?
Uh, gosh, four or five months?
The same way with the other one?
No, the other one's a little longer. I'm not sure. I've been running my own business. The timeframe's a little weird. Been super busy, so, I think maybe six or seven months, something like that.
Pretty steady rental.
What's that?
I mean, a pretty steady rental.
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Not making very long.
It's staying probably ninety to ninety-five percent booked, yeah, mm-hmm.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in here who would like to speak in favor of this case? Alright, is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case or who would have questions? Alright, the public hearing portion is closed.
I have a question for staff. In the licensing process, is it permissible to have concurrent short-term, long-term licensing?
You mean?
Not necessarily this particular case, but in any case.
You mean have a short-term rental license and also be a, a, a long-term landlord? Not at the same location, but there's nothing that says that you can't be.
I'm, I'm speaking to, at the same location?
Well, I think you'd have to be one or the other. It's one side of the coin or the other.
Did we advise this particular applicant, in some cases, traveling nurses can be on-site for sixty, ninety days?
Well, the, the ordinance says the maximum is thirty days.
For the short-term rental?
Mm-hmm.
And he's aware then that, in a case of a traveling nurse as a tenant, that the thirty days is applicable?
Well, I can't speak to what he's aware of, but that's what the ordinance says, and I'm sure he's sitting here, so he's aware of it now if he didn't before.
It's actually set to a maximum of thirty days, so it's minimum of a week, maximum of thirty days.
Okay, so technically, this person, this made-up person, could stay there for thirty days, check into a hotel for a day, and come back and stay for another thirty days, correct?
Theoretically, yes, I don't know. I've never had that happen, but I don't, I don't see anybody doing that, but I suppose they could.
Sure.
If I allowed it, they would still have to request to stay. It's always a request for, for a book.
Sure, they have to go back through the platform again, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, thanks. Any other questions? Or motions?
Do I try it again since I did it already?
Yeah.
You had rehearsed.
I did, I had rehearsal. Is this the right one?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number nineteen dash four hundred dash thirteen, short-term rental, Arlington Street Better Places LLC, with staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Unless there's any last-minute questions or comments, we are ready for the vote.
Commissioner Drieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Weir?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number one nine dash four hundred dash thirteen, short-term rental at thirty-four twenty-eight South Arlington Avenue has been approved. Congratulations, and, uh, being a short, uh, being a small business owner myself, well, just keep saying it to yourself. It hasn't happened yet, because it's gonna happen. It's just gonna happen, but it's, it should be a good experience for you, and I hope everything goes well for you. Okay. Our next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. Does anybody have any changes, modifications, spelling corrections? Okay, the pre- with the minutes will stand as, approved as written. Um, any, uh, questions of, do we have for staff, or do staff have anything to tell us or share with us?
Nothing from staff tonight.
Okay. When's our next, uh, our next meeting? Okay.
February eleventh.
February eleventh, okay. So, we're gonna start going through these, uh, delayed, uh, short-term rentals?
Yeah, I think we have two or three scheduled about every meeting for the foreseeable future, so.
Okay, alright. If there's nothing else, we will stand adjourned at six forty-eight PM.